Okay. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the Fledges Allegiance.
The Fledges Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, student reports. Do we have any student reports tonight? None? No. Okay. Moving on, Secretary's Report. Approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of 7:28:15. If there's no additions or deletions, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a comment on that. I had asked a question during that meeting and it was a little bit, I was a little unclear. I wanted to clarify what I was asking so I could get a clarification on the answer. On the Assistant Principals unassigned, what I was trying to ask was, will they be certified pre-K through 12, the unassigned assistant principals, so that they can go between schools?
Dr. Crowe?
They'll be certified for the building in which they're based.
Okay, so if they need to go to another building, is, do we have anything?
They're not doing evaluations in other buildings?
Okay.
They're doing, they're doing specific skills across the district specifically, for the most part, PD.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approve and retain executive session minutes of 8:415. Any corrections? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approve workshop meeting minutes of 8:415. Any corrections? If not, a motion to approve?
I just had one question.
Yep.
At that meeting, I asked the superintendent report two days prior to meetings, and here it says the superintendent, Crowe, agreed if the report was done by that time. I don't recall the superintendent saying that, maybe other members remember the response. I just thought there was a nod that yes, they would be provided two days in advance to meetings.
What's your?
Superintendent report. Page two, under section five, where it says superintendent report.
Okay. Yeah.
The sentence that says superintendent Crowe agreed if the report was done by that time. I didn't agree. Can I comment?
Dr. Crowe?
Hi, Ms. Messy.
Hello.
No, I didn't agree wholeheartedly, but I said as I would try, in effect, to do that. As a matter of fact, today I have not done that because I wanted it to be timely, and so with the school year not starting, as an example, today, I wanted to be able to report out on today's visits to the schools, so I didn't do it in advance.
Okay.
There'll be times when it won't be done in advance.
Well, just can I say one more thing? According to policy, was, a school committee supposed to get any handouts that are pertinent to the agenda three days prior to meeting?
Yeah, I think that's, that's more in relation to items that we have to take a vote on. In this particular case, it's a superintendent just giving us a report to us as to what's taking place in the district. If it's something that's going to require a vote, then yes, there'll be something that will come out with backup information for that.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, Missy, did we have a motion and a second?
No, we haven't.
All right, is, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approve and retain executive session meeting minutes of 8:18:15. Any corrections?
Mr. Chair?
Wendy?
I was not listed as present, but I was here. Heather was listed as present and absent, so I think it's just a typo.
Okay, we make that, we'll make that correction.
I was present, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was present at the executive session meeting via remote participation, but for the open meeting, I was not present.
Right. All right, motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Next, approve workshop meeting minutes of 8:18:15. Any corrections?
That I wasn't in attendance.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, so voted. Thank you. Next item, financial report. Mr. Suter?
Mr. Chairman, so in the package, you have the expenditure report as of August 31st. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through it. We are still reviewing a lot of the encumbrances that are presented in the report, and due to the position changes from Lake Street to Wyre Village to Knox Trail, we're still working on getting a final roster for all those buildings. So you'll see a lot of over expenditures in teacher salaries accounts for Wyre Village and Knox Trail, but you'll also see that the, there's a full budget for the Lake Street School, which doesn't exist. So as soon as we can get a list from the various principals and we can nail down all the positions that are in each building, I believe at the October meeting, I'll come forward with a request for a transfer to clean all those line items up and, and put the money in the right budget line items going forward. I'm just trying to see if there's anything, anything else that needs explanation. I don't, I think most of the, most of the issues that we, that are on this report that look like they're over expended are due to that, that main issue of closing Lake Street and not moving the money around. So we, hopefully the dust will settle and we can confirm all those positions and get that cleaned up.
Now, before we move on, any question for any members on the expenditure report?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. For our October meeting, through you to Comptroller, Gary, can we have the report with listing the respective transfers, but then the report reflecting those transfers so that we can see how it affects the, the encumbrance and the balance and the percentage columns and the budget? I think it's just a lot easier for everybody to digest it that way.
Yep.
Have that for the October meeting, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay. Heather?
Would it also be possible to get an expenditure report on grants? We haven't seen that in a long time.
Hi, Gary?
We can, but we, there isn't a lot of grant activity yet this year. I'm not even sure if we've been awarded many grants yet, but I can give you probably a final report on what was in last year's budget. And I'll give you, I'll, I can provide you whatever we have available at the time for the next month.
Anyone else? Gary?
So, back in June, the student activity accounts were handed over to me for, to manage, so I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. I reconciled all the accounts, and I plan on providing you at the October meeting an updated balance and a listing of all the activity accounts that are included in that. And we're also, I know further down on the agenda, we're going to deal with a recommendation to approve an auditor for the student activity account. So once the audit is complete, then I can provide you with a balance, and, and then we should be, we should have the final report on that. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, included in the student activity account is the, the class accounts for the high school, and the class of 2016 will be at the Spencer Fair next week. So we're going to follow the same protocols that we used for the Country Fest, as far as managing the money, depositing the money on a daily basis. So we should be fine for that, and everything should be all set. There should be no snags in that. Just to bring you up to date, the fiscal overseer met with me last week. He's coming in again tomorrow, and he's providing me with quite a bit of assistance in getting the fiscal 15 books closed and moving forward on the end of year report and filing the necessary reports to, to DESI. So that's, that's working out well. Lastly, we, we hired CPI as our treasurer. We met with him today, and he's been working on a project to provide a reorganization of the financial office to help us realign job functions. So after meeting with him today, we talked about going forward, completing the report. It's about half done now. So what I wanted to report to you is, there's a couple of options we have with his report. He's done, to this, to date, he's done flow charts of the existing job functions in the office. We expect to get job descriptions of revised responsibilities in the office. If we would, if we would like him to provide us with a report with findings and recommendations that led him to the revised job descriptions, he's requesting an additional 25% on his existing contract, which would be $2,800. So if we don't care about the findings and recommendations, and we only care about the final product with the job descriptions, then we're, we're okay. The current contract is in place, and he will provide us with that. So I'll just, I'll put that out there for the committee to, to decide on.
Yeah, any comments in regards to that? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Vinnie?
I'm fine with, you know, accepting it as is, without the findings. I'm not interested in spending an additional 25% of his contract to do this. I'm, I'm comfortable with what's been done, and we move on.
Okay.
It's just my opinion.
Anyone else have any opinion in regards to this?
I agree with Vinnie.
All right, is, the chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right.
To, to accept the reports that have been provided, the revised job descriptions that have been provided, and to not enter into a, an additional contract for an additional 25%.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Want a roll call vote? Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
The only, the only other thing I want to just bring you up to date on is the whole, is the busing situation. Everything went fairly well today. I did have a police officer at Main Street and Ass Street to cross students over there that were going to Knox Trail. I can report to you that there were no students that crossed Main Street at that location. I was at Cherry Street and Ass Street with a vest and a stop sign, prepared to cross kids if need be, but since no one crossed at Main Street, there were no kids to cross at Ass Street and Cherry. We will have a police officer there for the next two days this week, just to bring awareness to the fact that we're crossing kids there going forward. But again, there seems to be some fluctuation in ridership. I met with the bus company this afternoon. We are going to revisit the ridership at the end of next week, and we'll take a closer look at students that may have moved out of the district or decided to go to a different school, and if that changes the ridership, then we can come forward with another recommendation to maybe change the busing a little bit. But until, until we get to that point, we got to hold tight to the, the original plan of what we presented last week.
And you anticipate that's about a week out?
We're going to meet with the bus company next week, and then the following week, and I think, is there a workshop? I can have a report for the workshop.
Fifteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Any question by any members in regards? All right, anything else, Gary?
That's it.
Okay, moving on, superintendent's report. Dr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very brief tonight because school just started today, but I wanted to bring you up to date. New teacher orientation was held on August 25th and 26th. There were 12 new staff members that attended that. The training was held at Knox Trail Middle School Library, and I just want to thank the staff at Knox Trail and Robyn Sunquist and food service for the refreshments that were also provided. Open houses, I attended the open houses at both Wyre Village and Knox Trail last week. We had agreed that we would get parents in. I also was at East Brookfield today when the preschoolers arrived, and they were all very well attended and extremely positive. The vibes were very, very good. I also know that the high school, the new principal invited the freshmen to come to an open house for an hour last week, and that, that too, from my understanding, I was in another meeting at that time, but my understanding is that was very positive as well. Convocation was held yesterday, and staff were welcomed in this room to the school year at, Mr. Hayes spoke. I wanted to tell you that I really appreciated the fact that members from both Spencer and East Brookfield attended that convocation, and I think that the staff really appreciated their, their presence. It was very, very positive. I get a lot of good feedback afterwards, and I hope that positivity remains. Inspection of the buildings. I did want to let people know that Ms. Feeney of the Department of Environmental Health, of the Department of Public Health, will be starting the building inspections, as we had discussed before when the concerns came up about air quality. He'll be inspecting all schools, and he starts on October 27th at David Proudie. He will then schedule all the inspections for the other schools. So as soon as he's finished that one, we'll look at his schedule again to get the other ones scheduled. And relative to the buildings, I also wanted to report that the fines that had been imposed for violations of the high school by the Department of Labor Standards, I appealed those fines and was able to get a waiver contingent upon certain remedies being done by September 21st. I've met with Mr. Suter. I've also met with the high school day custodian, and have been assured that those things will be in place, and we're working, we've already worked on some of them, and we'll be continuing to get those done. I did want to give you a, a brief update on the Director of Academic Affairs. I put that aside as we developed, we appointed the high school leadership team for this year, and so put that off. We'll be reposting that position, and we'll be interviewing, I'll be reviewing the applicants and then doing the interviews during the month of September with a screening committee. The first day of school today was pretty exciting. Mr. Suter and I visited every single school. We did walkthroughs of the buildings. We met with each of the principals, and actually spent lunch at Knox Trail with the eighth grade, which was pretty exciting all by itself, and spent some time in the buildings today. So it was a really positive upbeat day, and we look forward to many more of those days. Last but not least, I'd just like to introduce the academic leadership team for the 15-16 year again. I want to apologize to Ms. Bowalick because last time, I forgot to say she was returning. I consider her a veteran, so I do that. But if I could just have people stand and be recognized, I think, you know, it will start this year again well. The academic leadership team is, PPS director is Ms. Cala Chioda. High school principal is Eileen Bellistock. Assistant at the high school is Eric Corey. Knox Trail Middle School principal is Jody Barassa. We do have to get used to saying middle school. We're all used to saying junior high. Assistant at Knox Trail, John Thoma. Wyre Village principal, Linda Stanlin. Assistant at Wyre Village, Joanna Bowalick. And last but not least, Ron Tomlin, East Brookfield. I know we're going to have a great year. We feel really good about the strong leadership team that we have this year. Thank you, Ms. Stan.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Moving on, unfinished business. We'll, we'll need a motion and a vote for Panther Flag Football approval as a fundraiser. Dr. Crowe, do you want to give us any update on that, or?
No, I'm just, you know, very glad that we're able to get this thing moving forward, that we found a solution to do it.
Questions in regards, but otherwise, chair would entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Wendy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item, motion and a vote on Unit B contract. Mr. Cludia?
At our last workshop, I updated the board on that we had reached agreement with Unit B, which is the Administrators Association, and that contract has been ratified by their association. It was ratified in executive session by our, by the board, and it's, this is really just for a public session vote to publicly accept it as a contract.
The chair would entertain a motion? If you want to put one in the form of motion?
Motion to approve. Unit B contract.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Jim, any further discussion? Want a roll call vote? Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, next item is facility use proposal. This will require a motion vote as well. We'll have information given to us by Melissa and by Mr. Suter, who is going, is Melissa here?
Yep. I think ready to vote.
My apologies, I wasn't prepared to present anything tonight.
Well, the members have been given your updated packet.
Yes, everything was presented last week.
Right. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at it. Do you have any questions, any of the members, for Melissa or for Mr. Suter? Guys, do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mike?
I took some time to go through the districts that we were comparing to, and I found in three of the six districts that there, there's no charge for any nonprofit groups. They, I believe they were the Tantasca, the Bay Path, and Shepherd Hill, Dudley Charlton. Basically, what we're calling Group B, and the others, and what we're calling Group B, and what we're calling Group C, the other school districts that I was looking at were combined to Group B, and there was, there were no fees. So I mean, I would, I would like to maybe bring this back. We can update it a little more, because I, what we're calling Group B are like Little League scouts soccer, merchants basketball. So I mean, I would like to maybe bring it back, have them look at it a little bit more, and maybe have no fees for those groups because they're nonprofit, you know, because that's kind of how some of the other districts are doing it.
Yeah.
There were still fees, they still have the fees for if we need, if it's after hours where we need, you know, a custodian or kitchen help or whatnot, but the fees themselves.
All right. Any other input from members in regards to that?
I agree with Mr. Ethier. Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't like to, I, I don't want to see the nonprofit organizations charged for facility use unless it, it goes beyond the hours of when a custodian would be available in a building.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, it actually addressed if it goes beyond the hours, a custodian's in the building, there would be a fee for that.
Okay. Anyone else have any suggestions?
If I may address, if I may address that? Thank you. There are several districts in the area that do not charge fees, and I, as indicated in the packet I provided, those districts are also financially better off than we are, and we do have a lot of groups in the towns that use the, use the buildings five days a week between, you know, basketball, if they're at three different schools, and if they're using the buildings every, and I'm, I'm not singling out basketball, I'm just using an example.
Yep.
If they're using, you know, five nights a week and then on weekends as well, and it doesn't open up the facilities for other groups, but we're also not passing along the cost, that's just what I wanted to raise awareness about.
Okay.
Because they are using the facilities, you know, for extended periods of time and for months at a time.
Well, I understand that, and I mean, there was another district in here, for instance, you had Shrewsbury in here, and they have some fees, but I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider us similar to them. I mean, whereas they just passed an override. So I mean, it just, to me, I, I can't see the nonprofit, I don't think we should charge nonprofits.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any opinion on it?
Mr. Chairman? I think one of the things that we spoke of at our, at our last workshop, I brought up that we should have a agreed-upon group of comparative communities. And I think rather than beat this all over the place at our workshop, at our next meeting, let's agree upon, between seven members of this board, the comparative communities that we're going to use for this. Doesn't mean that we're going to follow what they do, but it'll give us a guideline, and we can utilize them, because I do agree that some of the communities in here maybe wouldn't be the communities that I would have chosen to, to use. I, I know this was done, you know, at our direction to get some information, and I know that Melissa, you did everything you could just to get as many different communities to respond, and I appreciate that. And I'm sure you sent out information to other communities, they just didn't respond. But this is what we have, and I just think that it's, it's important that if we're going to put ourselves up to what other communities are doing, we need to look at those communities. We need to understand what those communities are about. The fact is, is that we don't have the money to support no fees in, in sports in this district. We don't have the money to pay janitors to come in here after sports teams and go through the buildings. And as much as I, I do understand what the, some of the coaches came down and said, we clean this, we clean that, there are bathrooms, there are other things that have to be considered, and it is the responsibility of the district to make sure that these schools are appropriately ready for school the next day. So, you know, if we're going to put it off, let's put it off to our next meeting, and, or let's just table it and stay with the policy that we have for the moment, and table it until we can agree upon those communities, and then send it out and get the information.
Well, I, what I would suggest is, I think we have enough regional school districts that are close by that we don't have to, we don't have to make this bigger than what it is. I think if we take Tantasca, Quayborg, Quarvin, Dudley Charlton, and Bay Path, that's five districts that pretty much are competitors in the area, and they're all local to us, and that should give us some indication as to where we want to go.
And I'm fine with that if we want to agree on that now, and then
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that.
Just so we can have it for our workshop. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. How do members feel about that, of picking those five regional school districts? Does that appear to be comparable to you? Quayborg, Quarvin, Tantasca, Shepherd Hill, and Bay Path?
A lot of those districts have a lot more towns. We, we're just a two-town, I mean, I, I get that we're a regional district, but we're only two towns. So the districts we're being compared to, I get that they're in the area, but they're much bigger districts than what we're dealing with.
Well, I, I guess the problem, as Vinnie said, we can beat this thing to death. So if we're going to do that, we're probably better off to just table it and stick with the policy that we have. Let's move this thing on. We've been kicking this around for almost a year and a half now. It's been put on the agenda for the third time for a vote. This will be the last time, if the board wants to move it forward to the 15th workshop, it will be voted on at that time, or we will stay with the regular policy. But I think, I know, I understand what you're saying, some of these other districts are larger, but I think they're going to be more comparable to us than to try to find two-town districts that are 50 miles away from us. The community, the area that we're going to be competing in, this is what's normal for the area, and I would suggest that we look at that, or as Vinnie said, go ahead, John, Vinnie?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think not just looking at what they're charging and the groups that they're charging, but let's look at their enrollment numbers, and let's look at their gross budget. I think if you take all of that together, whether it's, whether it's two communities making up a $24 million budget, or it's five communities making up an $80 million budget, really doesn't matter. I mean, we can, we can slice that back down, but I think that that's important to understand. You know, look, at, at the end of the day, these, these buildings are owned by the communities of Spencer and East Brookfield, and they're for the use by, by the residents of both communities. And I, and I think that, you know, the more we can allow them to be used, the better off we are. There are certain things that, as we all know, that need to be in place. Insurance is something that we can't bend on, and, and I'm not willing to, to bend on having to pay out of our pockets for an organization to use the facility. It's got to be, the organization has to pay the cost. I made it clear, I'm not looking to make money at this. Alls I want to do is cover the costs, but we have to cover our costs. I mean, that's, that's kind of what got us into this whole predicament of $1.3 million in the hole to begin with. We started spending more money than we had, and if we continue down that road, we'll just go back to where we were. We need to change the way we do business. We need to cover our costs, and that's, that's what I've said since the day we started talking about this.
So perhaps, Melissa, in regards to what Vinnie has stated, maybe for the 15th workshop, you can look at the groups that have been using, go by past history from last year, and be able to come up with a number for us as to what that number is that we would be passing up if we didn't have any fees for those nonprofit groups?
You're referring to the amount of groups and their specific usage?
Yeah, what they used last year and what that cost would have been, so that, to Mike's point, we can see exactly, you know, if you're asking to pass, we'll have a numbers, a ballpark figure anyways, as to what it is, you know?
Mr. Chairman, to your point about the districts you mentioned, three of those districts that you had just mentioned were the three that don't charge. districts that you had just mentioned were the three that don't charge, and I'm not asking, through the chair of Vinnie, I'm not asking for people for it to be free, I'm just saying if, I mean, if there's janitors in the building, if the lights are on, if it's during business hours when, you know, the janitor's second shift, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with the insurance, they need to provide their insurance, they need to provide their glory, I'm just saying if it's a nonprofit, and, you know, it's during regular janitor hours, I mean, if it's the weekend, if they want to do something on the weekend, and it addresses at the bottom of the page, the proposed fee schedule, it addresses janitors and kitchen staff, and I'm in agreement with all of that, I just feel that registered nonprofits shouldn't be charged.
Okay, all right, well, we'll put it back on the agenda for the 15th, Melissa will get us that information, but members should prepare to make a vote up or down on the 15th, or we'll table and stay with the same program that we have now. Fair enough? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, thank you, Melissa. Next issue, substitute pay rates in the region, Dr. Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You didn't get these in advance, because we were hoping that we would get more information, we did not, by and large, I believe we got two more. And again, this is to be in line with our neighbors, to be sure that we're offering competitive, maybe missed one, we need one more. We want to be, we want to be fair about what we pay, so that we're encouraging the right people to substitute in our classrooms, so on the chart, what you'll see on the top line is what we're currently offering, and then you see the other ones, and again, the same problem exists with this comparison, as does, is exactly what just happened, we can only get the information, the people that respond to us, so this is what we have as of now, we received two just in the past few days, but this is it. So ours is at the top, so as you see that two-year degrees are pretty similar all the way down, you'll see some differences, on our long-term people, it starts to change, and on the specialty subs, it starts to change.
And so we're pretty much, we're pretty much in line with what others are doing? Anyone have any comments on?
In terms of the FOIA degrees.
Right.
For the teachers.
Yeah.
Which is what our initial concern was.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'm the one that brought this up, so, because I felt it should be looked at and reviewed, and I'd really like to take some time to review it.
Why don't I put it on for the 15th workshop?
I would appreciate that, I, you know, it's good to look at these numbers, I really want to review this and think it through, because I want to do the right thing-
Yeah.
-for our district, so, we know what our rates are now, and, you know, it looks like, you know, just a cursory look, and a couple of columns, it looks like we're, you know, kind of at the low end.
Yeah.
And I just want to look at it.
Yeah, okay, no problem.
Understand it better.
Chair will put it on for the next workshop meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. Under new business, accept Harrington Physician Services donation of 13 backpacks filled with various school supplies, Dr. Crowe.
As you know, we need to accept donations, the school committee needs to agree to accept them, so I'm pleased to announce that I was notified that Harrington Physician Services wanted to donate 13 backpacks that are filled with a multitude of school supplies. My understanding is that the school nurses keep these, so that when they know there are students who are in need, they distribute them, so I'm hoping that you'll be able to accept that donation.
All right, any questions from members, otherwise a motion to approve.
Chairman, motion to accept with gratitude.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Second, like, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All so voted. Next item, accept Nyla Webster donation of books, Dr. Crowe.
Nyla Webster is an author who has consistently, since I arrived last year, to the best of my knowledge, probably at this point, we're up to over 1,000 books that she's personally donated to our schools, this is another 300 books that she's donating specifically to grade three and grade 10 this year for the fall.
Any questions about that, if not, a motion to accept?
Chairman, same motion, to accept with gratitude.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Subjected by Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So voted. Next item, enrollment report, you have in your package, enrollment report, questions, or comments?
I have a question.
Heather?
I'm just curious as to why the way enrollment is presented was changed, it seems like it happened around about May, and I feel like we're getting less information about enrollment than we used to get, we used to have it broken down by grade levels, and by towns, as to how many kids were in each grade level, and to me, that information's necessary, especially for us to make informed decisions regarding budgets.
Okay.
If we could go back to the old format, I would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments in regards to it? Dr. Crowe, do you have any response?
May, through the chair, may I ask Ms. Messier, so, just to be clear, it was broken down by town, within each grade level?
Each grade level, we could see how many kids were in every single classroom across the district, in every school.
Okay, anyone else have any of them? All right. Thank you, Heather. Moving on, personnel report, Dr. Crowe.
That's actually going to Suda. He has the first.
Suda.
So actually, because of the time of year, we really don't have a personnel report that would be very accurate at this point, there was a lot of shuffling going on at the end, with teachers coming and going, so, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't have a personnel report that would be accurate, I'll have one for the next meeting.
For the workshop, for the 15th?
Yep.
Okay, all right, everybody fine with that? Okay. Next item, review auditor proposals from Melanson and Heath and the Abrams group. Cludier.
Mr. Chairman, the board had requested that I look at the, or I volunteered, I should say, that I would look at the auditing proposals that came in, I handed one out this evening, only because it arrived to me at 4:30 this afternoon, from McCarthy-Hardgrave, and I have contacted Melanson and Heath, we've had their proposal for a bit, they, after speaking with Cheryl Burke, she indicated that if we were willing to enter into a three-year agreement, that she would reduce her rate, this was not a bid for proposals, this was a request for proposals, so there's a difference, and she said that that's the single-page handout that I gave every one of you this evening, she would reduce her rate to $18,000 per year for the next three years, and fix it at that. That is what we pay now, we've been paying to Scanlon and Associates, it's a fair price, and, you know, she wants, you know, their firm would like a three-year engagement letter. I will tell you this, Melanson and Heath is well-known in the industry, if you went through that packet that was, their package that was in your packets, you'll find that they do an awful lot of school systems, they're one of the top three that do school systems, that's what they do, a three-year commitment makes good fiscal sense, gives us some stability in that area, you really don't want to be changing auditors every year, you want an auditing firm that can draw those comparisons from year to year, they can't do that if they're in here, you know, you have a new firm in here every year, so, it's my recommendation, after reviewing both of these, and these were the only two that responded to our request, you know, that we award it for a three-year term to Melanson and Heath, they understand that we're awarding this late, they understand that it's September 1st, spoke to her again today, and she's, they're prepared to, you know, if we appoint them this evening, they're prepared to contact the comptroller tomorrow, and get moving, so that we make all of our deadlines. So that's my recommendation, and I'll answer any questions if I can.
Questions from anyone, comments? I concur, Vinnie, with everything that you've said, I think, you know, the board made it clear, we wanted a new set of eyes on this, and you're certainly correct, I think to give a three-year contract will give us a much better product in the long term, with what we'll get from them, so if there's no objections to that, then the chair would entertain a motion for Melanson and Heath. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
First by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Subjected by Wendy, any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
The second form that was in your packets was the, a proposal from the Abrams group to do the student activity audit, now this audit, this year, I think, felt was a little different than what it would be in a normal year, because of everything that's gone on in our district, I felt that we should have, you know, a specific set of eyes on it, Mark Abrams has been hired as our financial overseer for the state, the state has concerns with what's going on in our district, and I think all of you are well aware of that, they're very concerned, and they want to make sure that they're in the know, so I do feel that it's an appropriate thing to award it to his firm to do the student activity audit, and this isn't just of one school, this is of all the schools, and for this year. Melanson and Heath, if you noticed in their proposals, they did break that down, student activities, and in future years, we had agreed at a previous meeting, that although the state statute says that we have to have an audit done every three years, and we can do an internal audit in the other years, I had made a motion that we do it, just do an audit every year, and be done with it, let's just stay on the right track, keep everything on the up and up, and nobody has to be concerned about it, if it were being audited on a regular basis, because when they do the normal audit, they're not looking at this, they're not looking at, and they're not testing everything inside of this, when they do a student activity audit, they're looking at student activities, they're not looking at the big picture in our district, they're looking at this specifically, so that's what they're going to focus on, and so it would be my recommendation that this year, we award that contract, the price is right in line, in fact, it's a little less, it's $4,500 for an audit of the student activity funds for one.
Any questions or comments from members, Mike?
I have a question, I guess it might sound a little ignorant, but is there, being that Abrams group is going to be the overseer, there's no conflict with him, with their outfit doing the audit?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I spoke to Mr. Abrams about that, and I made it clear that what we're looking to accomplish, and this is outside of his role as the financial overseer, although he's wearing two hats.
Yeah.
He's wearing two hats, his job is to oversee not just some of the finances of the district, but the entire finances of the district, and unlike our previous financial overseer, who was not a CPA, you know, this financial overseer is a CPA, and I think the board, I'm saying this more for public edification than the board, you all know that we don't get to choose these people-
No, no.
-who are overseers, we're pretty much told who we're going to have, and, you know, I think that Mr. Abrams will work out just fine, I think that his fiscal knowledge will help this district.
Through the chair, thank you, Vinnie, I just wanted a clarification.
No, that's fine.
I understand that he's appointed as a fiscal overseer, but it's our decision for the student activity audit, and I just wanted to make sure there wasn't, and, you know, for myself and for the public, just make sure that-
Absolutely.
-there wasn't any conflict there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments in regards to it? If not, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Wendy, is there a second?
Second.
Subjected by Heather, any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, treasurer, consideration of the subcommittee's recommendation, Mr. Cludier and myself did this, as you know, after deferring to other members, Vinnie, I'll turn it over to you, and let you give the update and the recommendation versus the subcommittee.
So we posted the position at a couple of different places, given that it's not really, although it's a school treasurer, a district treasurer, and we did put it on School Spring, we also put it out on Indeed, because we wanted to just get a good, fiscally solid person in here to be our next treasurer, we've been using a subcontractor, as you all know, for the past few months, and that subcontractor's made it clear that he would like to end that relationship, you know, by the end of September, so, we've gone ahead and interviewed, we received resumes from over a half a dozen candidates, we set up interviews for, there were six interviews that were set up, and in the end, because of withdrawals and scheduling conflicts, we interviewed two people for the position, two highly qualified people, two people who are currently treasurers, either one could have fit the bill, either one could have done the job for the district, they're both currently treasurers in varying capacities, after, you know, speaking with both of them and going through the interview process, and our comptroller, Gary Suda, sat in on these interviews, and certainly asked a few questions, and certainly imparted his knowledge and wisdom as the district comptroller into this decision, we elected to choose William Schlossstein as our new district treasurer, he comes from the town of Warren, he's been the treasurer for the town of Warren for 25 years, he's a CPA, he's, to coin a phrase, he's just what the doctor ordered for this district, he's a very fiscally responsible, sound, and ethical person who will do this district very good, so, that's the recommendation of the board, of the subcommittee, excuse me.
Any questions or comments from members? If not, the board would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Subjected by Wendy, any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item is to authorize the chair to negotiate the treasurer's contract, it would be, it's a very short contract, what we would suggest is that he would start, be appointed to be effective tomorrow, run the contract out to June 30th, and then give an additional year, so we'd be given a two-year contract, his position would be prorated starting for whatever the date is that he starts this week, we had a range of salaries in the advertisement, we didn't hit the top range of 24, we settled in somewhere around $20,000, if that's acceptable to the committee, there are no benefits, he will be paying into the retirement system because he's in that system already, and he's indicated that he's ready to be up and running tomorrow, contact Mr. Suda, start the process of getting his name on the books with the banks, getting him bonded, and getting ready for him to be able to move forward, hopefully to be able to do the next warrant cycle for us, so if the board is in agreement with that, the chair would entertain a motion to have me negotiate, Vinnie?
One other thing I just want to add, is that we had originally, this is an annual appointment that this board can make, and we could certainly extend that contract for a longer time, given the, all the changes in the financial, you know, leadership of this district, I just felt, you know, I felt strongly that I don't want to put somebody in there for, you know, six months or nine months, because the contract would run from September 2nd, if we appoint him this evening, through June 30th of next year, so he's going to be there for 10 months, I really don't want to do that and then change out again, I just don't think that makes good sense for this district, and I don't think you're going to get a really good sense of the person, this is a part-time position, and this position will, some of this position will be done remotely, but that first year is going to be, not only doing the treasury position, but certainly setting up procedures, solid accounting procedures and practices, and being a CPA, I think we're going to, you know, really be able to reap some of the benefits of his background to put us on sound fiscal tracks, so I really think that we should, you know, award him a, whatever it would be, a one-year and three-month contract, or to that effect, excuse me, a one-year and 10-month contract, as opposed to a single-year contract, so that was the thought process there.
And as you all realize, this is the last part of the financial puzzle, once this person is appointed, we will finally have a solid financial team in place, and he could certainly start the process of putting the proper practices in, there's a lot of things yet to be done in that position to bring us into best practice type operation that we need, so, any other comments or suggestions, otherwise, we had a motion by Heather?
Sure, a motion to approve.
By Heather, and there was a second by Wendy, no further discussion, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Our next issue, vote to appropriate within budget of Knox Trail Middle School to convert funding for one teaching position to the school adjustment council position, Jody, are you here, would you come and speak to this, please?
Thank you, we had a recent resignation on Friday for a seventh-grade social studies teacher, I actually looked at the schedule, and I was able to combine seventh and eighth grade classes, making the classes a little bit bigger, instead of average size of 14, because we piggyback social studies with reading- because we piggyback social studies with reading, so those classes were thinned out anyway. So, by combining, instead of being truly teamed with the social studies department, I asked the social studies teachers for 8th grade and 7th grade, would they mind the larger classes? They actually accepted. So, I was able to place kids for the first day of school in a social studies class, so they're not starting with a sub. Um, and as a result, I really feel the need that we need to broaden our services for general ed and special ed, um, which would piggyback with the learning center program that is on paper right now, marking, um, with Chala, uh, Kala Chayoda, that was a little mixed, um, to make that program up and running. So, I feel that it's just going to add services to kids, um, and not affect classes and class sizes, so.
All right. Uh, does Kala, do you have anything that you care to add to this, or?
I'm wholeheartedly in agreement. We are beginning social emotional programming at, um, all levels this year, so adding the additional counseling support will create a much more effective, uh, resource for students to be able to access.
Okay. If you'd just stay there in case there's questions from any of the members. Questions from members, anybody?
Just wondering, how large are the classes now?
So, they started, um, we actually have reading classes that are around 12 or 13 for those kids in 7th and 8th grade that need it. They get, they're actually tested into that program. And then the, the social studies for 7th and 8th grade were about 14. So, now if you take their, their classes are averaging about 23 class, uh, class and kids in a class. Still manageable, they were very, very willing to go forward with that. This is a programmatic change from last year, but effective one, for, to provide level services for all kids.
Any other questions, comments? All right, the chair would entertain a motion to approve.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, Heather?
I just want to know how the superintendent feels about this decision.
Highly recommend, highly recommended.
Well, thank you.
All right. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Set by Vinnie, any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Same thing.
Yep. Uh, next item, approval for Knox Trail's annual fundraiser. Jody, I'm sorry.
Thank you again. Um, so this is actually the third annual fundraiser that Knox Trails had. I actually brought it into the school a few years ago. Um, some previous schools that I, um, worked at had this fundraiser. It's great for school spirit. It lacks, it lasts about two weeks in duration. The kids, um, get rewarded for the efforts that, of the fundraising that they bring into the school. Um, there's, I gave you a little packet of the background and why Great American. We work with a consultant, she comes in, she really facilitates the whole program. She has a kickoff meeting with all the kids to really get, again, school spirit up and running, and we have 5th grade this year, so I really see that our proceeds are going to be at its height. What's great about this year, I've been working very closely with the parent group, so instead of using AA accounts for depositing all the funds, they went out this year and they got their own, um, tax ID number and checking account that's up and running. We're ready to go with that. So, everything is going to be separate from the school, except for, we will reap the benefits from the proceeds. They will donate whatever our needs are as in field trips, and I gave you that. Um, treasury report over the years, as you can see, we started very small a couple, a few years ago, and we've just grown and grown and grown with what we were able to provide for our students. Um, it started with just agenda books. We do, um, field trips, we bring in programs, we do, we brought in technology to the school. I have a great group of parents, um, that have really ventured out on their own to make this happen for us this year, knowing that we're under some scrutiny for the AA accounts. Um, they're here if you want them to speak on that behalf, too.
Any questions from any board members? Uh, Vinnie?
Mr. Chairman, um, actually to you, uh, or to Dr. Crowe, whoever best wants to. Do we have to approve this? If this is being run through the Parents Association, does this board have to approve it?
Uh, Mr. Marcus?
Funds coming to the school, it has to be approved.
If there are fun, uh, could you go to the mic, please? If, if there are funds coming to the district, we have to receive those and accept those, I understand that. But do, do we have to approve a fundraising event? This is a global question, not just this one. If it's being ran by the parents groups, as opposed to the student activ, through the student activity funds?
The question I think would be, if the resources of the school are being used, then it should be accepted by the school committee. If the, if it's independent of the school completely, you're not using the telephones, you're not, uh, using office space, if it's independent of the school district, then no. But if it is to be, uh, the facilities of the school district to be used in any way, I would recommend that the school committee accept, uh, the fundraising activity.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jody, could, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Crowe?
I just wanted to add that one of the concerns that I would have from the superintendent's seat would be that I would want to know if students were involved in the actual fundraising activities, because if our students are going to be involved, I would, I think that's another reason that the committee should review it.
I, I think it's a good idea. I just want to, I, I actually received an email, and I, I'm not certain who the person was that sent me. It was a concerned parent, asked the question, and, and I did tell him to please check with the superintendent's office, that I wasn't sure. That's why I asked the question publicly.
Anyone else have any questions in regards to it, or comments? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Set by Mike, any further discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Wendy?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Uh, next item on agenda, citizen input. Any citizens wish to be heard? Yes, ma'am? Just give you a name and address for the record, and, uh, you have three minutes, uh, to make your comment.
Good morning, I'll be quick, it's late, I'm tired, long day. I'm Lisa Trombley. Um, just a couple of questions, well, clarification, actually. And the inspector of schools with the deadline, is that referring to questionable asbestos in two rooms in the high school?
We'll address any questions that you have, uh, when we get to our comments, but this isn't a question-answer period. You can make a statement, uh...
Okay. So, I do have quite a concern with the asbestos, so I hope the inspector's going to check that out.
Yep.
Um, also, I hope that Mr. Suda has looked up safereats.org. I think making the decision to move kids on buses really should be sought out and mapped, um, reasonably. Um, also, I hope we have an explanation of the criteria for...
I'm sorry.
An explanation of the criteria for the kids on why the kids were selected in certain areas to not take the bus. Um, and I, the nonprofit, um, you still have to pay water, usage, electricity, additional trash removal for, um, school activities and stuff, so we should be charging something regardless. I just wanted to put that in. Um, also, I just wanted to let everybody know, Bus C was pretty much empty today, driving by Grove Street, um, and the police officer sat in his car. There were parents that actually watched, um, kids, parents felt it was really unsafe for the kids to cross. There was no crossing guard at Cherry Street, there was a cop sitting in his car on Main Street. Um, there's a lot of stuff that we need to be looking at. Safereats.org is actually through the state. They will pay us, they will actually pay to do, um, any type of painting, lines, things to make our, our school zone safe. And I don't know why we haven't done this before, making that decision on moving kids. And if we're going to make the criteria, you know, 1.1 mile, it should be global, not just this street, this street, this, it should be consistent. That's it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else, uh, wish to be heard? Yes. Just give you a name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Steve Chalmers, I live on Browning Pond Road, Spencer. Um, I've been teaching a karate program, uh, in the school district here for a few years. It's been going very well, successful. I understand the chaos that you've all, we, everyone's been dealing with the last few years, and how things are really crazy, and I really admire and appreciate all the time that you, you're all putting in on trying to straighten things out. And I also understand the importance of clarity, policies, uh, sticking to rules so that things can run smoothly, but I also think that there are times where it's appropriate to take individual situations and, and look at them, uh, as they are, and, for an example, my karate program. Um, I think it's very beneficial to the community. Um, the whole emphasis of traditional karate dough, and what I've been raised in all my life is, uh, tolerance, uh, conflict resolution, sympathetic understanding, it's not just punches and kicks that I'm teaching. And yes, I do have a school in town here. The thing about, uh, using the school, I think, um, I, I always have a much different turnout and a different population when I'm using the schools. And I've been using the Quabbin and Quaybuck School Districts for 25 years now, and they all have similar policies, um, as far as use of building to, to what we have here, but they do make exceptions, uh, because I don't charge much money, and I think there's, um, something about being in the school, that there's a factor, a safety factor, and I think the parents and kids feel, I think parents realize that if I am being allowed to use the school, obviously I've been quarried, I have a liability policy, um, you know, if you just walk into any place off the street, you really don't know what you're getting into, there's contracts and, and different things like this. So, I think there's a safety factor, and it's just always worked really, really well. And the way, the way it looks now, I, I know my program wouldn't, um, it wouldn't take off, I, I can't hand out the applications anymore. I do pay for the use of building at a moderate rate that I'm very, I'm very pleased with. If that were to jump up a lot, I, I, if I raised my prices, probably 2/3rds of the students I have wouldn't be able to afford it anymore. Uh, so I think it's, uh, been very good for the community, I really appreciated being able to use the school buildings, and, uh, we have, I've had janitors tell me where their favorite clients, because we're barefoot in there. I usually have small groups, very well-controlled, uh, we don't even need all the lights, um, it's a low impact on the facility, and, um...
Okay.
I, I do understand what you've been going through, but I think it is appropriate from time to time, maybe to make some exceptions and to look at things individually, and...
All right, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to be heard? Just give you a name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, my name is Amy Paul, and I'm from 43 Lincoln Street, Spencer. So, I just want to echo what the gentleman before me just said. Um, I am, I would like to urge the board, please, to really consider, um, case-by-case school usage, groups for school usage, especially nonprofits, um, because, as you know, and Mr. Cludier, you mentioned it a lot, you know, we have a lot of financial concerns, and I understand that as a taxpayer, um, and, but I do want to also echo something you said, and I think part of the reason we're in these straits is because we didn't pass the override, um, because a lot of the taxpayers felt like they didn't have the money to do that. So, I don't, from what I'm hearing, and I, and I don't have my facts, I'm no expert on exact quotes, but nonprofits would have to charge their players a lot more money. And so, if the taxpayers, to begin with, wouldn't support the overrides, I don't know how they're going to be able to afford, uh, putting their child in a sport. And I do want to be clear about the fact that, um, sports is a huge part of school spirit and community spirit. And if a lot of children and families have to make the decision that their child cannot play, with a town without a student activity center or YMCA, I'm concerned what other activities these children might be attracted to, or families might, um, otherwise have them do. It's a so- social output, and it gets the kids in a school for a reason other than academics. I would really, really like you, please, to consider, um, how much you're going to charge nonprofits, and I do think that it's best that you don't charge them anything. Um, but of course, for-profits, maybe we can attract more for-profits and charge them more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Just give you a name and address, please, for the record.
My, uh, my name is Carter Bemis, I reside at Two Sunset Lanes, Spencer, Massachusetts. I am currently a senior at David Proudy High School. Um, being someone who grew up around these youth sports organizations such as merchant basketball, Little League baseball, uh, I really can't stress enough the importance of youth sports, especially in today's society with childhood obesity on the rise. And the general consensus I've gotten at this meeting is that we're allowing school usage, but we make it seem as though it's almost a burden to us. But we should really be, we should really be encouraging this and doing anything we can to fight, to keep our sports teams alive, our sports programs. Um, I still do work in the Little League program, I'm still an umpire, and over the years, the turnout has gone downhill. Uh, it's unbelievable how, how our sports programs are losing their interest, and a big part of that, I feel, is lack of resources and lack of facilities, and I think that if we do allow the usage, if we do allow lower fees, then we are much more apt to see, uh, spike in kids playing, because frankly, growing up playing baseball, basketball, football, soccer, if I weren't there, I would have been at home playing video games, sitting on my couch, and that just contributes more and more to the rising problem of childhood obesity. So, I do think that youth sports is something we should not only be allowing, but encouraging and fighting for.
Okay.
Additionally, today being the first day of school, I did attend my first classes, and I was really disappointed when I received my textbooks, and they're older than I am. And I don't know how I'm supposed to learn in, you know, I can't learn about current events if my textbook isn't current. Our, my textbook in sociology was produced in 1995. Um, so much has happened in the past 20 years that we can't learn about, because we don't have the resources. And I understand that the budget is tight, but I feel that perhaps we need to make our, our learning resources more of a priority, because I, really, when it comes down to it, the reason we're here is education. We care about our education, we care about our students, and the best way to do that is to give us good resources. The best way to allow a good, right, education is better resources than what we have right now.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, be heard? No? All right. Uh, there's not another bus, Linda? Yes. Uh, committee comments, future agenda topics? Anybody having, uh, Heather?
Um, I was just wondering, did we receive preliminary results, um, from MCAS scores?
Uh, Dr. Crowe?
The principals have, and it's embargoed until it's released by the department.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, I'd just like to know when the chairman and superintendent want to meet to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
Uh, why don't you, uh, set up something based on your schedule, because I'm going to let you be the lead person on that, and, uh, you contact me when you're ready.
I thought we voted that you were the facilitator. I'm just...
Yeah, I did, and then, uh, Mr. Cludier added you as a member, and I thought that was a great idea, and I think it's time, uh, that I take a step back here and let somebody else step up to the plate, and I'm going to be happy to work with you, and you're going to lead this committee.
Okay.
I'll be waiting to hear from you.
All right.
Anyone else have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mike?
I have a few things.
I have a few things. First, I received today, came home with my kids, the lunches and milk prices, and I noticed a raise in the milk price, so I kind of went back and did a little research, and I found an email from Mrs. Sunquist asking for us to, to get on the agenda, some raises in prices. And I don't, from the date of the email, this would be the next meeting, so.
Is Robin here? No? Okay, we can.
Yeah, basically, I'm saying we're going to have to get that on the next, next agenda, because.
Dr. Crowe, do you have any?
No, Mr. Suter.
Gary?
I wasn't aware of the price increase, so.
We'll, we'll contact her, and we'll put it on for the workshop on the 15th.
I guess my question is, what do we do in the meantime with, it's, we haven't approved the, the price increase, but it's, it went out on all the paperwork today.
Yeah.
For all the students.
Normally, Robin's here, and she's not here tonight, so I don't.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, if I might, we didn't approve a price increase.
Yeah.
I mean, it should be rolled back until it gets brought before us.
Yeah.
If, you know, you're saying it was increased from last year?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure.
I found an email dated, I don't know when, dated the 20th of August, and, you know, from Robin, and the last, it was, the last couple of sentences are, I'm asking that the milk price go up and the adult lunches go up. It looks like a 60 cent increase on the milk prices, and I don't know what the adult prices were, but.
60 cent increase?
No, 50, from 50 cents to 60, a 10 cent increase.
Thank you.
Apology. My apologies.
Some good milk.
Anyway, this was, this was dated the, the 20th of August, and we haven't had a meeting.
All right, Mr. Suter, will you address this tomorrow with Robin? She works under his supervision, so he'll address that. Was there anything else on there, Mike?
That was it on that, but I did have just two other little, well, one big thing, one little thing. Two Fridays ago, Mr. Tomlin took me on a tour of all the buildings that were affected by the move, and.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I mean, I'm, I'm in awe of all the work that the members, that the staff put in. I mean, the janitors, the custodial staff, the summer help, I mean, the teachers volunteering, packing their rooms up, you know, setting their new rooms up, I'm just, I was very impressed. I mean, we, Mr. Tomlin and Gary, you know, did a great job.
Yep.
Running that. The only, the only little thing I wanted to address on it is, we really need to address Lake Street, because we want to get that buttoned up before heating season, because we want, if we get stuck in paying for the heating bills when it gets cold, I mean, it's going to be like the building was open, and it's just going to cause more problems.
Yeah. Mr. Suter is working with the town manager on that.
And my, my last little thing was, the September 15th meeting, can we designate that as a special, because it, a few things came up tonight that it looks like we're going to have to vote on, rather than wait until the first October.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem, yeah.
I think, and in case anything else comes up between now and then, if we can get that posted as a, as a regular or a special meeting where we can.
Yep, that would be fine.
We'll, we'll treat it as a workshop, but we can vote.
But at least, I will do the, the one-time vote, that's fine, yep.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Dr. Crowe?
I just want to bring up that I was contacted by a community member who would like the, the committee to think about a March break as opposed to a February and April break when we do school calendar, not for the spring, not for the spring, but for the following school year.
So perhaps if we can get some information from that person that's suggesting that, or get something out, maybe we can check with some other districts that are doing that and get some feedback on it, and just see what the feeling of the committee is. Yeah, yeah. It is my understanding that it was tried once before by a former superintendent, it lasted one year, and they changed back to the normal schedule that we've been on, but it's certainly something to.
Do you know why, Kevin?
No.
Do you know why it got changed back?
No, I don't. No. Dr. Crowe?
I just want to make something clear, this suggestion came from a community member.
Yeah.
It's not from the superintendent.
Anyone else have anything? On the opening day yesterday, Dr. Crowe had asked me to go to represent the school committee, as she said Mike was able to come, as was Angela, and I made some statements to our staff then, and they were there, and they were able to hear what we had to say coming from the school committee. So for those that weren't able to attend, I just wanted to touch some of the high points of, of what I said to them. I gave them just a brief overview of what this committee has been faced with for the past two years, starting from a district that was in financial chaos, having $2.3 million in order to avoid a state takeover, having overseer appointed to us, and then ran through the positive things that we've been able to do since that time, and the fact that we finally ended for the first time this year in the black, and it appears as though we have turned the corner financially, and start moving forward on what should be our major concern of everybody, and that was academic excellence. In talking about the things that we've accomplished, I gave credit to the committee and to Mr. Cludier for the yeoman's work that was done, leading the subcommittee negotiations, and the fact that our teachers, our administrators, our secretaries, our parers, all have contracts now, and negotiations are starting this week with the custodial staff. So it's, it's our hope that those contracts being in place will, will put us in a better position with the people that are working for us in the district. In talking about the things that we accomplished, I thought that I should also look on behalf of the committee, on what things did we not do so good? What could we do better entering into the new school year? And I think if we were going to be honest with ourselves, we'd have to admit that we certainly could approve our ability to communicate with the public and with staff members. And although we had a lot of tough things, the, the type of problems that confronted us were urgent, they ran deep, and a lot of it didn't allow us to have that type of open communication that, that most people would have liked to have seen, but I do think that we can do better, and, and we will do better going forward in the next year. I also expressed that I think we need to have a better, a better appreciation for the staff that works for us. I think oftentimes, we, we tend to take a lot of things for granted, because we're not right in the, right in the mix of everything that's going on on a daily basis and stuff. So I want to make sure that they all knew that, and I expressed to them that we know that teaching is a difficult profession, we know how difficult their job is, we recognize that, and, and we appreciate it, and, and going forward, we are going to try to work in a better manner as far as expressing to them where this committee's vision is, and where we're going, and how we're going to get there. In addition to that, as, as part of this improvement of communications, I'm going to ask the superintendent to contact the principals and instruct them that the parent council groups are to be put in place by October 1st, and that the schedulers should be forwarded to the school committee of when those monthly meetings will be held. I think that's going to give an opportunity for the many parents that have been trying to get involved over the past year to help us to move this district forward, that's really the most effective place where their voice can be heard. It allows them to be involved with the principals of each building, and there's going to be a student council for each one of our independent buildings, and they can actually take an active role in developing the budget, and developing policies, and developing the type of culture they want in the school, and have some input in curriculum and textbooks and these type of things. Because unfortunately, what happens is, when a lot of these things come to us from the parents' position to the school committee, it's too late, the boat has already sailed, that budget process has taken place, the recommendations have gone to the superintendent, it's now come to the school committee. So that is really the most effective place for parents to be able to have their, their voices heard. I'm also going to ask the superintendent that she instruct that by October 1st, school improvement work starts in each building. In the time that I've been here, I have not seen a school improvement plan from any school in our district. That's something that's required by state statute, and again, it will help us to bring forward positive changes, make sure that the buildings that we now have that are in good condition remain in that, and then allow us to focus on resurrecting this idea of doing something with the high school. What are we going to do with the high school? If you look at what's happening on the high school level with the loss of students, it's not the sole reason for it, but it certainly is an important piece of it, we simply aren't competing with what we're offering for facilities to students that are coming into the high school level. So I know that was tabled some years ago, when all the financial problems first arose, but I think it's time in this new budget session for the committee to consider resurrecting that idea and starting the process of looking at, what are we going to do to try to provide a better facility on the high school level? So final thing, I think, that I mentioned to them is, I asked for an invitation from the principals of each school, being cleared through the superintendent's office, for the chair to go and meet in each building at a staff meeting with the members of those buildings, so that I can sit down, listen to what they have to say, and bring that feedback back to the committee. I think that opens up a better avenue, it allows people to be more open and honest with what they want to say. I have no problem with people telling me what they think of me privately, and listening to what they have to say as far as what they think we can do to assist them better to deliver the educational product. So I think those are all positive changes that we will be on the move of implementing as we're starting the, the new year. So that's all I have. If anyone else doesn't have anything, the chair is going to need a motion to go into executive session. We're going in under three fronts. The first is to investigate charges of alleged criminal misconduct, or to consider the filing of criminal complaints pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38. The second is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel in regards to teacher grievances pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 38. And the last is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the governmental, governmental body's bargaining or litigation position, and the chair so declares. Having said that, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim, on a roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Vinnie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Wendy.